Evening again. Uh, Commissioner Work is going to lead us in the pledge.
When did he do it? United States of America and the country for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Russell.
Present.
Chairman Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We have four sets of minutes to review and approve. Uh, anybody have any motions?
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support. That's minutes July 18th, August 15th, two of them, and September 12th.
Okay, I didn't have the whole thing. Yes, but what he said.
Uh, those who support that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Mentor approved seven zero. Thank you. Now we have an agenda proposed and uh, we do have a late edition request one and a late edition request two. And out of respect for the presenter from the Health Department who's going to be making presentations, I would like to move fifteen right to the first action item. So that he could stay and still travel where he's got to go tonight. So I'm looking at any other, yes?
And um, late edition request for an early voting read. Did we add that one yet?
Which one is it?
Yes, thank you.
And I just have a procedural question. Um, with number eighteen, the late edition request number three. Eighteen is number four.
Now renumbered number four.
Renumbered number four.
Early voting is number four.
Early voting is number three, correct?
Oh, number three is.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Sorry. I know, I just want to make sure.
Yes. In who either way?
It's a four or three.
Four is, four is early voting and number three is down there, item eighteen on the.
Right.
So is it your intention to do late edition number four after late edition number three?
No, that's uh, that is uh, right after seventeen on the agenda.
Late edition number four will be right after late edition number two?
They're just numbered on their, on the way they came in.
Okay, okay. Number four will be the voting, okay? Um, my next question is procedurally, can we have us a, a item on the agenda last then without uh, without a public comment afterwards?
We checked with the attorney on that and uh, we moved the public comment uh, before our closed session. Uh, so that the public wouldn't have to stay here during the closed session. Uh, I suspect if they uh, want to stick around for the hour or so, it'll be a closed session. Uh, we listened to him again.
But we were clear to wait.
We, we did get attorney's approval on that. Oh, so we have a public comment before our closed session. Uh, so that the public would not have to stay here during our closed session.
So technically we added a, a, a public comment at the end also. People are welcome to speak at that one as well.
With approval of the board, we could.
I don't know, I just never.
Is that what you propose?
I, I think it would be a good idea.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Motion to approve as modified.
We have one more change. Item number twelve uh, needs to come off. Uh, we, we approved that last week, but some of the materials uh, that we approved are not available. So they've got some more work to do and then they will come back. So next one.
Correct.
Yeah. So item five up. So now with all of that, uh, we have a motion.
They approve as modified.
Your board.
All those who support that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Open and approve, we have an agenda. We now have uh, three uh, presentations and we'll start with Ms. Allen's uh, administrative update. Thank you.
Um, last month, or last week, I should say, we had one of the largest board packets, I think over four hundred pages plus the, some of the additional. And I just want to say kudos to the Turk's office for getting the packet turned around, um, twenty-six pages of minutes. So that's much appreciated. Um, I also want to acknowledge um, Commissioner and Chairman Wessel for taking the time to meet with employees here at the county last week. I did not personally attend, but I know that it was much appreciated. So just want to thank him for taking the time to do that. In terms of project updates, tonight we'll have information about the lower level Health Department, Environmental Division. Great deal of work went into last week after a lot of discussions. So hopefully um, we've been able to answer the questions that the commissioners have addressed. Um, the HVAC, when we got confirmation that the biz will be open October second. So that will be the day before our board meeting, so our executive meeting. So we'll have that information for the board um, to review at the October third um, executive session. And let's see. Just as a point of uh, mention, there was a conversation last week about question about legal opinions and if the public has access to those legal opinions. And if they are provided under um, attorney client privilege, then we are not um, required to divulge um, that information. So just want to kind of, so there was a question about that so that people understood. Um, and upcoming events, budget work sessions, I think we sent out an email earlier to all the commissioners letting you know when the next budget work sessions will be. And just want to report that there'll be three staff attending the nurse retirement conference later this month. The Finance Director, myself, and the elected employee designee, Rob Kirven. What's going on?
Thank you. Any questions for the administrator? Okay. Next on our agenda is a point broadband update and I'd like to recognize Patricia Sorensen Little and all of her work on that. And ask her to come to the table if she would and introduce, reintroduce Chris. And we're going to hear from, from our consultant on the point broadband update. Thank you, Patricia.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be on this side of the table. It's a new experience and a good one. So it's my pleasure to introduce Chris Scher to you. It's been real joy working with Chris on this project. He's done an outstanding job. And he's going to update you this evening in terms of where point broadband is and uh, um, take any questions you might have and I'll be happy to address anything as well. So with that.
And he is here with uh, with our uh.
Oh, Dan.
Yeah.
My apologies. You see.
Again.
I wasn't going to let him slip by. No worries.
Well, yes, he is here with a, one of the members of, of Points uh, executive team. And Dan, we're really, really happy to see you tonight and I'm glad you're going to be here handling all those questions that Chris might not know. So with that, Chris, let me turn it over to you and Dan.
Thanks, Patricia. I, this uh, this update, it's, it's not going to be a long one. I'll, I'll tell you that right up front and I'm trying to make it a little longer just by saying that. I, but I'm going to just go through a couple of numbers here. We're making great progress. Uh, we've got a lot of crews working in the county right now. I, I think we're somewhere up near a dozen crews in different areas. Uh, so I just want to just run through kind of where we're at. We started in the south part of the county. Uh, down along Boogie Road, there was a cabinet where we had the groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, referred to as Cabinet Nine. Uh, we've got that area complete. Uh, and I'm going to share my screen and just throw some of these numbers up there. Uh, that should get it to you. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we have a right now, um, and this needs to go to that. There we go. I, this is the, the map of the county, obviously showing the different areas. And if we look in the southern part of the county, uh, that uh, darker blue color is really three of the cabinet areas that we have uh, turned up now. Uh, the construction is completed, it's spliced, it's active. They're in the process of uh, offering it to residents throughout that area. Cabinet Three uh, is down and mostly in Elmwood Township. Cabinet Nine, down in the lower right corner, is where we started. And that's, that's mostly Southern Elmwood uh, Township. It also picks up some people in Traverse City that was, I picked up on the, on the route for point broadband to get up into Leland County. Uh, and then Cabinet Eight, which is quite a large one, it covers pretty much uh, the rest of Solon Township. Those areas are active now and uh, the crews have moved up into Cabinet Six. I, heading toward Cabinet Ten, which is where they'll cross the Narrows. And I get up into Leland Township. And the goal is, I, you know, it's kind of a race right now with the weather. We know how Leland weather can be. Uh, but we are doing everything we can to get all the way up to the lighthouse uh, before the end of this year. Um, hopefully we have a mild winter and we can keep on going, even if it does start to get a few flurries out there. But I, we will keep at it and with the dozen crews, they are making tremendous progress. Uh, currently we have about eight hundred and four, eight hundred and forty homes on, that do have service available. And they're working now to reach all those folks and give them the opportunity to sign up. I, and as you can see, about half, not quite half of those homes have actually uh, bought service. And I know I, a good percentage of those already sold have already been installed. And people are online enjoying uh, internet like they've never had before. So it's really, really proud of where we're at and how the crews have been doing. Um, also Dan, I'm going to let Dan talk about this part a little bit. Uh, they have purchased a facility south of Sutton's Bay and this is it. Uh, they're setting up operations there now and I'll let Dan elaborate.
Thanks, Chris. I'm happy to be here on behalf of Point Broadband. Yeah, the project's moving along. Um, obviously we'd all like it to move faster, but we are making great progress. Twelve crews in there, in there and, and now we've got a, an additional group of contractors and, and full-time employees working from an operational standpoint, getting things installed. So, um, one, one correction, we, we've actually passed a total of eighteen hundred homes. Um, of which eight hundred of those are, are previously unserved. Uh, so it's, there's a lot of more, but we, as we're building, we, we do have to go through some areas that are previously served. So the project made a, some, some pretty good headway in terms of volume, but again, it's a race right now against the wind. I don't know what we can get. Um, from a staffing standpoint, we've got two full-time employees up there. We're still looking for two additional. Uh, we've got six installation contractors and a construction coordinator and, and they're pretty much there every single day of the week. And then from operations center, we leased a, a location. It's about a mile south on uh, M twenty-two of Sutton's Bay. Uh, we probably won't put any signage up until next year. We're just right now using it as a, as a warehouse, making sure we get that uh, stocked up and have enough material on hand so we don't slow down our, our personnel.
Thanks, Dan. I, the other thing that I just wanted to bring up, I, this is the, the packages that are being offered. I, I'll let you read them, um, but something that uh, I've been pleasantly surprised by. I wasn't uh, uh, thinking this, we had talked about, uh, as we've been working on getting things fired up, you know, a very low installation cost. And as you can see there on the left side of your screen, uh, Point Broadband is getting that installation cost pretty low. I, it's just, I, we, we were expecting, you know, a nominal charge for installation regardless of the drop length, uh, up to a thousand feet as it, it says there. Uh, but Point Broadband is offering it free to all new subscribers right now. So that's uh, another bonus for the county. Uh, and that is really what I have. Uh, we, I, we, we've been go, it's been going smooth. Like I said, we've, we've been ramping up the customers, are ramping up the crews. And we expect that to just continue. We've got momentum started and I, we have a great shot at reaching the lighthouse by the end of this year. And that's, that's our goal. So with that, I will open it to questions.
Questions for Dan or, or Patricia or?
Hi, yeah, good evening. This is Melinda Lautner. I had um, someone living down on Harry's Road in Solon Township said you kind of went past them and now you're, you're, you're going to bypass them and go north and they were pretty upset about that. Is that an area you put the rail on the lines and you can still hook them up? Or are you coming back to, to that road specifically?
What, what area is that, Melinda?
I was saying, uh, it would be on the east side of uh, Solon Township.
Um, all of that should be serviceable. I, I'm looking at the uh, system map right now. Um, unless uh, they happen to be in an area that has already been serviced by somebody else. They're, they are um, coming back to some of those or if they are in a neighborhood with a private roads and homeowners association, they're working through several of uh, those around the county. Those are going quite well, but they take time. Uh, and larger ones especially, uh, they have, in their bylaws, they have processes that we have to follow. Or the point has to follow to get things approved. Um, but if that's the case, then certainly they're going to be coming back as soon as they get the proper permissions to be building into those areas. If you have a specific address, by all means, send it to me, Melinda, and we'll, we'll double check it and make sure that uh, you know, it, I don't believe anybody is being skipped. If they're building in front of their homes, uh, it's more than likely available. They just may not have gotten around to letting them know that uh, that particular street is turned on yet.
Okay, and then also apparently there was some announcement made that instead of, we had heard originally you were going to start on the east and, and go west and then north. And some decision was made to stop going west, but now go mostly north. It sounds like you're going to head to the lighthouse. How was that decision um, come to?
Well, we we, we are not going, Point Broadband is not going into Casson or Cleveland Township. We are still working on I, other plans for those areas. So Point Broadband has gone as far west in Solon Township as they planned to. Uh, so now the only direction to go is north, up into Centerville, uh, up into Leland, Leland now. And make it to the lighthouse. Uh, the Western Townships are still a work in progress. Uh, a lot of activity over the last few weeks with some of the grant programs uh, that have been uh, out there. And we just, we don't have any details yet to report, um, but uh, know that we're doing stuff almost every single day to try to get uh, uh, those four townships launched.
Do you want to extend on that? When or shall I continue? Well, you, you mentioned the other providers that are trying to come into Casson Township. Can you give a report on those?
Can you repeat that?
That is on our uh, October four budget meeting. I, I talked to, to Patricia and Chris earlier. They don't have the details on that, but they will have on October fourth. We can wait for that.
I'll track you through that.
And like I said, every day we're talking about that.
I'd like to share that um, at our Centerville Township meeting last week, um, a constituent of ours stood up and was thrilled with Point, Point Broadband driving up his driveway, um, signing them up, offering the free installation and a really competitive price. And um, that was really great to be in the room when somebody shared the success of this program. And um, I just encourage everyone to be a little patient as they work their way north. But I know they're in my township now and it's really exciting to see neighbors um, getting service, really good quality service. So I'm just really thankful for the program and it's, it's working in my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you for sharing.
I have a question. The uh, pre-installation, is there a customer commitment required for that length of contract or is that just?
No, no, sir. Right now our offer is, um, there's no contract and we offer a three-year price lock. A lot of times in our industry, you know, there's a little bit of a bait and switch going on. It's across the industry where they sign you up on twelve months and then all of a sudden they bring you up to the list price. So as a, one of the things that we do is we lock you in when you sign up for three years uh, with no, with no rate increases.
But, but I guess to, to make that clear, the, the installation cost is free whether or not I work to uh, to go for one month or two months or five. The rate lock is only appropriate if I sign onto a three-year contract, just to parse it down for you to understand.
There's, there's no contract and it, it, just the rate lock is there. Without, you can leave anytime you want. The only time that we have installation and, and we, this was put in as part of the contract at, at Chris's request was for the longer drops from our network to the driveways that may be fifteen hundred to two thousand feet off the road. Um, after a thousand feet, we charge a dollar twenty-five a foot. That's really the only installation charge or commitment that the customer would have to make on the front end.
Thank you.
Did you say a dollar twenty-five a foot?
After a thousand.
Wow, that's cheap.
Anything else, Chris or Dan?
Yeah, just, just a, a second point on that long drop issue. As many of you know, from the older traditional cable TV days, that was a really big problem. I, having a long driveway and being too far away from the road where the cable plan actually was. We no longer have that issue with fiber. Uh, they can be literally a mile off the road and we can still service it. Um, the fiber doesn't have the distance limitation that the old coax networks had. So everybody has an opportunity to sign up and get connected today.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Patricia.
Ty, uh, Chris, I don't know if you can hear me. Chris, can you talk a little bit about the map and uh, how they're updating it as progress is going forward so people know where they can go to check to see if installation is coming soon?
Sure. Uh, let me just throw that up real quick. We are, I, I will say we are a little bit behind on getting this map updated. But as you can see, th- this is the county map. Uh, and it shows, uh, these blue areas show where there's existing charter services. All of the brown hatched area is I, the areas where uh, Point Broadband is building right now. And if you are a homeowner, I, you have the ability to, I, I'm going to cheat here a little bit and find me an address just so I can show you how this works. Um, this map is available online. There is a link on the county website for anybody to get to it. And if I I'm not getting the address up here for some reason. Um, try a different one. But anyway, there's a search box here. And if you start putting in an address, let's just go to that one there. I, goes to West Bay Shore. I, somewhere on that map, I'm, there should be a highlighted, there it is right there, twelve fifty-six West Bay Shore. Shows that uh, this area is already serviced by charter. Um, but if it was, if it happened to land on a property that would be in the orange hatch, uh, we would see that uh, it was going to be served by Point Broadband. And by clicking on the property, you can see it down here in the lower left corner. Uh, it shows the anticipated date that it'll be completed here. We've got twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Uh, with a service available of up to two gigabits per second. And then a link to the Point Broadband website that will take you to the page where you can get more information on point and actually sign up. Uh, so as we go through, like I said, we're a little bit behind right now, but we're going to start changing the colors of all of the served areas. Uh, from this orange hatch color to a solid orange color, which represents that Point Broadband is now servicing that area. I, I should have that done in the next week or so. Um, we're working with the county GIS department to um, make those changes as they go along. And as we know, get better updates on uh, dates when it's supposed to be completed, we'll also be updating that as well. So again, the, the map is available uh, through the county website. And I, as soon as we get something figured out for the Western Townships, those two will have a similar uh, information on it and have the same capability to be able to click on it, find out who the provider's going to be and when we can expect them.
Thank you, Chris. And I'll add on the county uh, website under broadband, you'll also find an email address. So any resident who wants to be kept uh, apprised by our monthly email updates, just fill out your name, submit it and, you know, we'll be sure and add you to the list. Because that goes out monthly usually more often if there's something special to report. And with that, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of grateful people.
Well, next on our agenda is the Benzley Leland District Health Department Agency update. And Dan Thorell is here, V C Hillback, sir. Thanks for coming back, Dan.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, well, thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak to you tonight. Um, this, I am presenting the twenty twenty-two annual report. Now, there's only three months left in twenty twenty-three, but you know, that's where we're at. So, uh, my name is Dan Thorell. I'm the health officer for the Benzley Leland District Health Department. I've been in that role for about eighteen months now. Um, and I'm really, you know, I'm here to present, like I said, the twenty twenty-two annual report. And really the theme of the report is to reintroduce the community to all the life-changing programs of the Health Department. Twenty twenty-two was a year of transition for us. Um, after two years of emergency response, the Health Department moved more in, from, into a disease management uh, aspect than, than a emergency response. And at that time, you know, we had realized that after two years of emergency response, our staff were pretty exhausted. And we're in this phase of demobilization and trying to figure out uh, how to take care of our staff and, and get uh, people back into our, our services after a couple of years of the pandemic. Um, so during that time, we did see uh, the number of clients seeking services drop a bit. Uh, but through hard work and dedication um, of our staff, we've been increasing caseloads ever since. So I just want to go through a few highlights. Um, in the Personal Health Division, in the Women, Infants, Children um, Program, uh, Benzley Luenau District Health Department has a distinction of being the highest uh, has, having the highest percentage of babies breastfeeding at two months of age in the state at sixty seven, sixty-seven and a half percent, which we're really proud of. Um, and we're also a third in the state for babies breastfeeding uh, at six months at thirty-six point four percent. And we really attribute this to our great staff, the expertise and support. And we really attribute this to our great staff, the expertise and supportive nature of, of their work. In partnership, well, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to skip to highlights from our EH program. So just want to talk about their digitization project that we were, that we completed in 2022. All of, as a result of that, all of our Leland County records and Birmingham Health records, while in septic records are now accessible through our online portal, the website. That was a huge undertaking and really appreciate the hard work of our environmental health director and everybody else in the, in the program there to get that done. It's really been a benefit to the public. They're also able to apply for, pay for permits online now as well as temporary food licenses. So it's been an awesome addition to that, to the Environmental Health Division. Basically such a huge advancement for business owners and residents alike. Business owners, meaning realtors, contractors, septic pumpers can sit at their computer and find those records that they need every day instead of trying to call or perhaps having to leave a message or something like that. So it's really enhanced our customer service. And we're really proud of that. And actually Eric Johnson, who's our Environmental Health Director, won an award based on that work. So we're really proud of him for that. And other counties have looked at Benzy Leland District Health Department, other health departments and are emulating what, what they have done, what we have done. So just to give you a little bit of updates on numbers, environmental health numbers for Leland County. In 2022, overall, land use numbers were down about 12%. However, 2021, we're comparing 2022 to 21. 21 was a record year for permits for us. We've never issued as many permits as we, we did in 2021. So if you compare 2022 to 2020, we were up 77%. And if you compared 2022 to 2019, we were up 71%, which is pretty incredible. So we're still really busy and that even continues to today right now. In the fall of, of 2022, about last year at this time, we were working hard on updating our sanitary code. And that, you know, was a very labor-intensive process, involved a lot of writing, technical writing, legal review, and just following the process to, to basically get a sanitary proof, sanitary code, a new sanitary code approved. There's a specific process spelled out or laid out. The Public Health Code involves publishing the new regulations, setting public hearings, publishing the dates and times with specific timelines there, holding the hearings, and then Board of Health approval, and then individual Board of Commissioners for the District Health Department in both Leland and Benzy County to approve that. So that did happen, as everyone knows, and we did have the addition of our evaluation program in here, which is modeled after the Benzy Evaluation Program. So just skipping ahead a little bit, well, lastly, actually, talking about our financials, we did in the year with a surplus of 345,000. This, you know, so this funding was, the surplus was due to the, partly due to COVID funding and COVID immunization admin fees that we charged during the pandemic in that past year as we're, as we were doing that work. I do expect to see a lower surplus in fiscal year 23. And what are we going to do with, with that surplus? I mean, we're investing in the Benzy County Resource Center building. We're hoping to invest in, in this building for environmental health space if, if approved. We're looking at our staffing grid and making sure that we're staffed right. A lot of, you know, one thing, and I know a lot of you probably, probably realize this as well. You know, the, the landscape of employment has changed drastically in, in three or four years. So there's a lot of different things that we're looking at workforce development wise and just recruiting and retaining staff is, is big right now. So just want to say, you know, thank you for your local appropriations contribution. Even though local dollars are small, as far as our budget goes, it's about 11%. Those dollars are very flexible. We can use them to put in different areas of our budget because our funding can be very siloed with the grants that we have. And we can also use them for Medicaid match, which for every dollar, we, we can generate $2 in a lot of cases and six, about 61% of our local appropriations are matched that way. So it's really a good bang for our buck. And just to let you know, going into 2024, our request for local appropriations is flat. We are not asking for any, anything additional and our, we're not raising environmental health fees or anything like that. So that basically wraps up the presentation. So if anybody has any, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I have a question and I, I commend you and Eric and the Benzy Board members for their support of our septic code rewrite and supporting Leland County. In the first six months of septic inspections, do you have any data to report to us? I know you do. The percentage of wells and the percentage of septic systems that have failed?
Yeah, actually, so up to date right now, we are getting close to about 400 evaluations. We're expecting to be, we're, you know, between 350 and 400. We're expecting to end the year, you know, probably around 450 because things will slow down as the weather changes. About 16% of the septic systems that were evaluated were found to be failed. And about 1 to 2% of the wells that we looked at.
Thank you.
Failed or non-compliant?
I'm sorry, non-compliant. Yes, yes.
Required remedial efforts of any kind that are not compliant? How many said, okay, you have to fix this?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know the, the exact number for that, but it is, you know, a much smaller subset that had to actually be completely replaced. In, you know, or it was completely failed to where the point where, you know, sewage was coming on the ground or backing up in the house or going into the, going into the ditch. But I can get back to you with an exact number on that. Yeah.
Anything else?
You know, I know that people are relieved that the well inspections are going well. There was a lot of anxiety that I spoke to. I think that's a well that pays a lot of rent. So thank you for all of those inspections and for relieving people's anxiety about that. And thank you for the work, the septic work. That's so, so important as we, as we work to make sure that our lakes and waters and our hand are safe. So thank you.
Thank you. And you know, I can't say enough about the, our staff. We have very competent, skilled staff that are doing this work and, you know, they are, they're great. So, you know, kudos to them for doing such a good job. And I, you know, I commend Eric too for being a good leader in that area and just, you know, keeping, starting a new program is not easy in, in a, in a new area. So there's been a lot of work and he's done a great job.
Doesn't get ruffled, does it?
Not very often.
Any other questions or comments for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Will you stay around for the?
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely. Should I stay here or do we have some time? Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, I would like to thank all of you for coming this evening. And this is the first public comment opportunity of the evening. You have up to three minutes to speak to any issue either on or off the agenda. We don't take, we'll take questions. We won't enter into a conversation with you, but if you have questions, we'll get back to you. And we ask you to raise your hand and we'll recognize you and listen carefully. Yes.
Yes. My name is Steve Smith.
Table and if you would introduce yourself and if you wanted your township.
All right. My name is Steve Smith. I'm from Elwood Township. And the reason why I'm here tonight is about the Point Broadband project. They failed to come into our subdivision, which is Leland Hills number one. We no longer have a homeowners association. So I heard them talking about, you know, dealing with homeowners association. So I guess I was trying to find out how we can get them back on track to come back in and service 50 homes in our subdivision.
Give the minister your address. We will get with the consultant and get back to you.
Okay. She has my email. I've been in contact with her. So thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Kowski.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Is someone coming through? Thank you. I'm here. This is going to be a part one of at least the two-part series. The first of all is about something that struck me that was 400 pages of documents for each commissioner to go through. And that's been fairly consistent and only Superman or the supreme being can do an honest job with that much crap going on. Here's a part of an article that I read from, that was very interesting. James Buchanan received a Nobel Prize for his pioneering and work that demonstrated a simple idea. Public officials tend to arrive at decisions based on self-interest and incentives, just like everyone else. There's a common assumption that politicians and bureaucrats make decisions differently than the rest of us, that they're working for a common good. Buchanan said, and he understood it, persuasively showed that humans don't become altruistic angels simply because they're accepted by a government job or they accept a government job. They continue to serve their private interests in public office, and I'm going to add, at public expense, which should not surprise us since all action is individual action. And if action is all individual, all interests are ultimately private. Milton Friedman explained, every individual serves his own private interest. The great saints in history have served their private interests, just as most of the money-grubbing miser has served his interest. The private interest is whatever it is that drives the individual. Of course, those in government are loath to admit that anything as crass as private interests could motivate their thinking. Indeed, their power and political future rests on the idea that they are serving interests far greater than themselves. Unfortunately, much of the machinery of modern government rests on the assumption that politicians and bureaucrats do serve a common good. And again, I've seen this over the years, attended 35 years of meetings and well over 500 county commission meetings. And this has been very evident throughout and every succeeding year, every succeeding commission, this becomes more of a problem because I never see commissioners doing anything about petitions that people lawfully provide you to do something. There never has been in these 35 years ever a petition, but commissioners keep on doing things that they believe for our own special interest that the public needs and they have to tax them for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Wiesner, Elwood Township. Again, talking on the elections. We can't be guaranteed fair elections until we have paper ballots, get rid of all the machines, all the little drives too that you plug into. I noticed on the agenda here, again, county clerk number seven, geographical election results system purchase, references electionreporting.com. That if you go there, which I did last week, takes you to election source as a driver. And if you go there, it takes you to Dominion and E S S and S and Heart Voting Systems and how to get a hold of them. So it's directly connected to the Dominion machines, which, you know, 62% of the people in America, in a, in the Rasmussen poll, say there was election fraud. You talk about election denying, you're talking about a small or a large, it's denying fraud. We don't want fraud in the elections. 62% of the people would be such labeled and they're all laudable if they are against fraud. Any type of fraud, whatever party. So this little handout, I've got three topics that I wanted to get to. The first one is going back to my public comment number 14, which is on the tcfamily.org website. Public comment number 14, there's like, I think 30 pages, but I've just excerpted four of them, which referenced the USB drives. And then my second topic would be about Patrick Kolbeck at Wayne County Main Office on Election Night 2022, where the thumb drives were delivered like we want to do here to try to make it appear to be safer, delivered directly to the county, yet they were never used. He was there for eight hours and he observed they were put in a box and you can see the box in those handouts. And they were never used. They were downloaded over the internet. And the third one is GBI Strategies Director Gary Bell had 70 organizations operating in 20 states in the 2020 election linked to Biden, especially in Muskegon, they had like 12,000 fraudulent votes brought in or ballots, ballot applications brought in. So anyway, with the USB drives, I hope you'll read through that. There's 17 references to USB drive. You can make them so you plug them in and they'll flip the election votes totally. And a third grader can do it. Thank you.
Any else for public comment? Yes, Patricia.
Patricia Sodis Little, Leland Township. And I just want to thank you for supporting the Health Department's Parenting Communities Program. And thought tonight I'd share just a quick genesis for the new commissioners on how it started. I was fortunate to have the pleasure of chairing along with Tony and Sergi, the County Early Childhood Committee. Amazing committee of 42 people who were very dedicated and diligent about finding out what was working well with early childhood and what was not, and where were the gaps and what could be done. And after all of that hard work, they ended up recommending the village to cover two things. One, the Parenting Communities Program, and the other, the health initiatives, where they could, where it fit into the Health Department. So I've had pleasure of talking with a number of the 42, as we call them, from time to time. And everyone is as amazed as I am at the growth of this particular program. It was an excellent program. In fact, Maggie Spratt Moran, it's a brainchild of hers initially. But it has grown and been integrated into the services that the Health Department offers. So that now it's amazing. It has everything from, from fraternity of fathers to mom power. And in addition to their education program, their child player groups where it really isn't just child players. It's a lot of others going on in terms of learning at that point. And also their home visits, which are so essential to a lot of families. So I hope tonight, I know you'll be setting the village. And I know that Michelle Klein gave an excellent presentation last week, last month, and filled you in on the progress they were making. So I'm just asking you to be generous with them and give them the funds they need. They started off in a rough patch. They weren't able to begin their program the year they were started, scheduled to start because the funding wasn't available until winter. And so they'd really missed the first two quarters. And then, of course, about the time they hit their stride, they hit COVID. So they're right now back to roaring back with a great program. And I think you're going to see even more growth since early childhood is a theme that you're hearing everywhere these days. So there are a lot of grateful families in, in Leland. So there are a lot of grateful families in Leland County, and please give them the support that they need to continue this really wonderful program. Thank you so much. And I apologize, I will be leaving soon. I did promise my husband I'd take him to dinner if he'd come with me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Maggie. We miss seeing you in this end of the county.
I know, I moved. It's hard to get from Empire to Lake Leland after a full day's work. I'm Maggie Spratt Moran, Empire Township. So first, I want to thank you all, county commissioners, for the work you do, whether it's self-interest or community interest. I'm sure that you wake up most days thinking about us, and I appreciate that. And Patricia talked about kind of how we got here, and I think one of the things I want to tell you about is other communities are eager to do what we do here in Leland County for children with one family, with young families. And a piece I've been thinking about is from the early, for the invention of all these programs in our county. We really were focused on the relationships children have, so the quality of the relationships. And we sort of always believed that really mattered. And interestingly enough, the data, the research right now is really saying, we shouldn't be focusing on a child, we should be focusing on the relationships around the child, and that's what makes the difference. That's what supports community wellness and wellness for the individual, much more so than just a direct focus on the child. And I think we did that. We were the first, I don't know if we were the first. We focused on that a lot in the early years and we built programs around that. So it's pretty exciting for the research is actually catching up with kind of what we instinctively were doing all those years. So thanks so much for continuing to support it and helping our families in this county grow. And I can tell you that families in other counties are curious about how they can make this happen too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come over.
Hi, I'm Celeste Crouch, Glen Arbor. I too want to thank you all for what you do for the residents of this county. And this evening, I'd like to just talk briefly about the build-out of the lower-level storage space. I am strongly in favor of it because in 2008, when this building was constructed, it wasn't finished, it wasn't completed. The lower level was not finished because the commissioners at that time said, we don't need it, we don't need to have the space built out. But now we do. 15 years later, with the absolute explosion of seasonal people coming into this county in the summertime and the increase in start, building starts, homes starts, the Health Department employees are under a great deal of stress just to get their responsibilities taken care of for the increase in services. And low and behold, look what we have downstairs, this beautiful space that's being used for storage, and we probably have the most expensive space right now of any county building in Northwest Michigan. I mean, it's expensive to just store exercise equipment. I'd also like to urge you to think about the commonality between the Environmental Health Department and the departments currently existing in this building. Because one of our biggest needs from the county and from you people is to try to make those people who need county services convenient. And the Health Department has really two separate divisions. They have personal health and they have environmental health. And environmental health has way more in common with the departments that are here in this building than they do with the services that are currently offered under professional health, such as women, pregnant women, and the needs of children. So when we talk about meeting the needs of our residents, aren't we talking about convenience and having that space used by the environmental health people who can actually interact with the other employees here, have meetings, just walking down the hall? It seems to me it's one-stop shopping. It's very, very, very convenient. And so I would say that this notion that the Health Department has to be under one roof doesn't really make any sense because there's really two separate roles being conducted. And they don't need to be together because very likely we won't have a lot of people coming in who would need a permit about a septic inspection or also need their personal health taken care of. The chances are greater.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You know my point.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Anybody else? Yes, Wellman.
I'm Jill Wellman from Centerville Township. I sent everybody a letter over the weekend, so I'm not going to repeat exactly what I said, but I did want to say it in person. I attended the executive board meeting last week as well as your budget meeting this afternoon. And I just want to say I was very impressed by the financial director and the information that he provided to us and to you. He presented information on the millage rates as well as the budget. And for people like us or people like me who come to the meetings but don't read the budget, let's face it, it's a little more than I want to take to bed at night. I, he made it very understandable, and I really do appreciate that. And the other thing I appreciate is they didn't just give you the facts, he gave you options and scenarios. And that's the way I think, at least. I always think in scenarios, and I think it's very helpful because I think it helps your decisions. So I just wanted to say that because not, I know you're getting that kind of input, but the public appreciates it as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? We do appreciate you coming, and we will have another public comment session before we go on to the closed session. Now, we're at Commissioner Comments. Any Commissioner Comments?
I just take this moment at the Centerville Township meeting last week, we were also informed by our township supervisor that he's going to have to resign for family reasons. And Joe Schwantis has been in that role for, I think, eight-plus years. He's going to be sorely missed, and I just want to express my gratitude to a fellow Centerville Township resident that has gone above and beyond anything you could imagine in serving this community well and we wish him best.
I want everybody to know that I'm not, I am paying attention, even though I'm leaning back here a little bit. I have my broken ankle on a stool regular, so that's why I'm like this, so I am paying attention.
Now, with that, are you going to tell them how you broke your ankle?
No, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We are now down on our agenda to the consent agenda items, and let me start this out by reading you a statement about the consent agenda. "The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second." And items showed up on the consent agenda if we all agreed in last Tuesday's meetings to put that on the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion or any request to take an item off the agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, and thank you. We are now down to the lower-level buildup, and Dan would come forward, and Sean, I think you are going to be a part of this. I would like to ask commissioners, and I'm only one, but we've had a lot of discussion over many years, and the last year and the last few weeks. And I think that we ought to try to hold our conversations to new concerns and new questions, and let's not try to repeat ourselves and repeat ourselves. And the chair, I'll remind you then, if I'm off base, you'll remind me I'm off base. Thank you. Do you want to start us off here?
Sure. So over the last couple meetings, we have been working on trying to confirm the terms of several different agreements, the lease agreement being one, the cost-sharing agreement, and the acceptance of the lower-level build-out. So I believe that we have addressed the questions that the commissioners had put forward to the best of our ability. And so in the documents that are before you, these have been vetted by, I think, both attorneys for both organizations. And like I said, the information that the commissioners have requested is provided in these documents.
Yes, Commissioner Lautner, then Commissioner Lott.
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve entering into a lease agreement between Leland County and the Bensy Leland District Health Department pending council review approval, although we have that already, right?
It probably, if there's any last-minute things, it's not a bad idea.
It's, I'll end that. Work.
And moved in second, is there any discussion or questions? Want to speak to your motion, Gwen, before we give it to Commissioner Lautner?
I would be proud. After much discussion, over a couple of years, we have worked, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, many, many questions answered, attorneys, council has reviewed and reviewed. I would welcome this division in service to our citizens in this building. Thank you, proud of this work.
Thank you. Commissioner Lautner.
Yes, well, I am going to correct you on one thing. There really has not been any in-depth conversation about this room for years. I believe it was two years ago, Commissioner Will Bonnick threw this concept out there of the space, and there really wasn't a lot of discussion at all in the meantime. And we did look at the room across the Soil Conservation District, which looked, should have been enough room at the time. But then the idea of the other room at the other end of the hall came up, and of course, the Health Department was like, oh, they would like all this room. So then came the plans for down there, which were unaffordable. So I know this, this has been, we raised a lot of questions, and yet a lot of our questions were not answered repeatedly, over and over, as we continue to have meetings, we won't get the answer we were looking for. This, in my opinion, has just been ran, routed through because some commissioners want it. So I think that we haven't done all our due diligence on it before that motion. So I know we got a couple of different motions on this to discuss, but I'm going to discuss it kind of in general. So I really wish that, since there's not a big hurry on this, that we would reconsider the room across the Soil Conservation. And if a person were to think about that, there is room in there, even with leaving the storage cage that has been there, that Soil Conservation is using in taking, even the senior services space. We could build out that space, that is right across the hall, right across the hall from Soil Conservation, which has been one of the arguments about those two offices working so well together. So what we're going to do instead is build out a space that is bigger than needed. It, this plan leaves a lot of, a lot of open space that I think is totally unnecessary considering all the open space in the basement as it is. So I think it would have been better in there. And instead now, if these motions go through tonight, we don't know what we're going to do with, with the things we have in that space now. That space when this building was built was to be just hand-on-hand extra space in case the county needed it in the future. It made no sense to build this building without the lower level. It made the perfect spot to put the community meeting room we wanted to have, and at that time, we had no other offices down there, and the employee lunchroom we wanted to have. Makes sense to do it at the time at little more cost than it costs to build this level and the upstairs level. So that was for future build-out for county offices, that was the idea, not the Health Department. I think we're doing the Health Department a real disservice of not keeping them together and encouraging them to find space for the future. I take it this motion is for 10 years. We've had a lot of discussion about what rate the Health Department should recoup their investments. I recommend seven years. I think that that's fair. And, and I'm very unclear about whether or not the cost allocations that will be required are same as all the other offices. Is it designed as all the other offices are?
Do you want to answer the cost allocation question now?
Well, I know the initial cost allocation that was presented previously was based on information that I had, that I was working on from just, just the space and not the confined space. So the numbers were a little bit lower, so you'll see the cost allocation that you receive this time is a higher cost allocation. One, thanks, Sean, for helping to put that together and filing that. So I think that it is more appropriate than what was provided previously.
Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, I believe we were instructed by Commissioner Chairman of the Commission to bring up new information. I would like to say that one thing that Commissioner Lautner did say about the verbal cross from the Soil Conservation District is that space isn't needed other than the cage. That is not the case. I spoke with both Buzz Long, the Director of Conservation District, and Lena Vander Mullen at Senior Services. Lena needs that space. She needs an accessible way to get to her equipment that she gives out to our community members. Buzz can tighten up this cage, but that space is needed for what it's currently being used, according to the two people that I spoke with that are in charge of that room. So that new information that you brought to us is fine, but I don't think it's necessarily accurate. And I think we said we're not going to bring up old, old information again, we're going to move forward, so I agree with that.
Yes, Commissioner Lott.
I just, I just want to, for the commission to just kind of give some grace, especially to the Health Department, and not really put upon them our decision of what they need, if this is what they need. And, you know, we've been in negotiations with this for a while now. So I just kind of left all of those things out there. I mean, I have changed my position based on some of the negotiations, and I just want to thank you for working with us and fulfilling our needs as we move forward. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross. Yes, I'd like to ask Commissioner Retro, who had two or three, four questions last time, were they answered by, were they satisfactory answered?
Congratulations have been addressed in the cost-sharing agreement as the change orders. All, all three of those questions were addressed in the cost-sharing.
Okay.
Anything else? Commissioner Retro?
So I'm going to run with new things, but I have kind of struggled my way through this decision as Commissioner Lautner discussed the previous chair of this board and the previous Commissioner District Three was the proponent of this project. And I have spoken with him and have tried to do as much research as I can to come to a reasoned decision on this, that it's not based on emotion or likes or wants, just, just on facts. And, and my journey through that, I have come to the conclusion that I will support this project. First of all, the Health Department mandated by the state of Michigan, we don't get to the decide, we don't have one, we don't get to decide, we can't have one. Whether what your emotions are, it doesn't matter, they're here and we are obligated to support it. That's just the law of the state of Michigan. Anyone wants to change it, go do it, but we have to deal with the facts at hand. As been mentioned, that the health department has to its avail federal and state grants to do some of these things. The taxpayers of Leland County do not just pay property taxes, they pay federal and state taxes. So no matter what the funding mechanism that goes to do this, it is ultimately borne by the taxpayers. So that, that to me is, is said, well, let's look at the least cost way to do that. As far as return on investment, once the, these improvements are completed, the moment they're completed, Leland County has 100% return on this. That's half of the thing, and we own all of the improvements. Granted, we don't have the use of them for a bit, but nevertheless, the entire project is owned by this county, and so that is 100% of return on investment for Leland County. And I wish we could make all of our investments that well. The cost sharing ratios, now that they're there, actually reduce the expenses for the rest of the building. Right now, the treadmills and the canoes that are down there do not pay any cost sharing to the rest of the services in the building. It's still lighted, it's still heated. This agreement allows for reduction of other benefits of other costs to the county, and so ultimately also benefits the taxpayers of Leland County. And as Commissioner Ross said, the contract issues that I thought were up have been fully addressed. So at this point, I am prepared to support this project.
Anybody else?
Should I call the vote? No.
Commissioner Lauder?
Yes, thank you. Let me make it clear, I said, Commissioner Ross, the space aside from those areas. So you have your cage area to the right, along with, with senior services, I said the space to the left, that's what I was talking about. Watching a one step burger, they, they also could move all of those storage equipments, all those areas back down to this end of the hall in the bigger space for storage, because we still have a need for some storage. I brought up a number of times, where are we going to put these equipment? Where are we going to put this stuff? Where are they going to go? Where is public court going to store their things now? Since we've heard it doesn't, won't fit in our toll bar? We haven't.
I think we have an answer for that.
That's one of my questions.
The court has said that they could store their equipment in the same area that the senior services is storing theirs.
They're going to put all of that down there in the exercise equipment, the ping pong tables, and all those, all that's going to go now down across the Soil Conservation?
I think we'll be looking at that as well as other options. We haven't vetted everything yet, but no, the kayaks and things will be potentially shrapnel and stored elsewhere, so there are some options.
Do you know our finance director arranged a big deal about finding a spot for the table tennis?
That was off the record.
It could be a next addition here.
So within this, this, this lease speaks to, speaks to maintenance and janitorial issues in utilities, but it doesn't speak to cost allocations. So how is that covered in here? So when it comes to all the costs, every other department in this, in this building pays for, as we talked today about resurfacing our parking lot, for the roof we'll have to put on someday, for the snow plowing and the lawn mowing and all of those, how, how is, how is that covered in here?
So the, the, what we're talking about specifically, when we say cost allocations, as I understand it, for buildings and grounds, air quote, is actually, just so we're all on the same page with the, the math, the numerator, if you will, that, that goes into that allocation is the full cost in Fund 631, which is our maintenance department. So everything in maintenance is, is, is included. So the denominator is simply the square footage in this building, as well as that is occupied, as well as common space. And so it's the combination, actually, to Commissioner Rexro's point, I think the, the, as you think about the benefit to the other, other departments that reside in the building, there's a piece of common space that is picked up in the, in, in that math, as well as the, the, the fact that you now have 1,711, or I'm sorry, total 2,711 square foot that is, that is covered with the lease in question.
I don't understand where, which, if we are in the contract, does that say that they will pay those cost allocations?
I don't have.
It's under Section 3 of the Cost Sharing Agreement. And I think it's right, I think it's.
Janitorial services?
I think that's referenced somewhere else. Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of that, right?
It's part of that total cost of, in the maintenance department. So if we went to our budget book, I think if you think about the total in, in that fund is in effect, the base, is the basis of allocations.
Budgeting, budgeting for the cost allocations every year for senior services, every other department in the county?
In the government.
So why do you make sure that you're not doing this, you're not saying the investment in is going to cover, cover those cost allocations, correct?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, it says specifically in here that we'll be paying the monthly cost allocation, it'll be recalculated annually based on that maintenance fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Are we ready to take a vote? Commissioner Lauder?
Well, I, I am going to oppose this, and, and as I said before, I think that we're doing a real disservice to the county in general, and I think we're doing a real disservice to the health department. Whether it's fed funds or local funds, if we had an opportunity to find some federal funds, I think that would have served the, the health department better and kept you under one roof. So you've got the same situation, you own the building in Lake Leland, sold the building, running out of space, and now, you know, the health department's urgency is now our emergency. And now we're faced with, now we're going to invest $1,000,000 into your offices on top of what we generally fund the health department at for a space we won't have any use of for 10 years. So in the meantime, now you've got personal health. I hope that the health department has plans to figure out some long-term housing situation, something secure in case you get pushed out of there. I know you had three years lease, was that just environmental health, or is your lease up now for personal health also?
The lease for the Bensfield building was, we just redid the lease beginning of the summer, so we just signed a three-year lease.
Another three years, so you have three years again to find a home. But as I understand it, so if you were to purchase a building in Leland County, you would be eligible for federal funds for refurbishing, and you would have a home again. And I just think that that is, that is what would serve our health department the best, is for you to find a permanent home that you want.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote, and I would ask for a vote on this decision.
Commissioner, I want to ask about Commissioner Oger, right? Yes. Commissioner Oger? Yes. Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauder?
No.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Re-elected, yes.
Rexro?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Six one.
Thank you. Thank you.
We now are moving down to the Cost Sharing Agreement.
Well, thank you. Excited for the partnership, so thank you.
You want to break it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was the toughest one, though, yeah.
That was the toughest one, okay. All right.
Commissioner Oger?
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve entry into a Cost Sharing Agreement between Leland County and the Bensie-Leland District Health Department, pending council review and approval, capital contribution to Fund 470, Capital Projects Fund Account 470, 000, 070, 900, 000. Support.
Discussion?
Second, you're back.
Any discussion on the Cost Sharing Agreement? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, six one. Thank you. We now have the acceptance of the lower level build out. You want to speak to that?
I think that we're looking at the bid with RCI. It was received previously. I think we again have addressed the requests. I think there was the third party agreement with the health department, I think. Our kind of assistance.
I move that the county board of commissioners accept the bid from RCI, Richter Construction, the amount of $3,561, $275 for the renovation of the lower level space for the Bensie-Leland District Health Department's Environmental Health Services Funds to come from Fund Number 470, Capital Projects Fund. Support.
To speak to this, I know you raised two questions about construction.
No, I mean, most of my concerns were in the Cost Sharing Agreement, and I had, I didn't see anything in the construction that I had questions on.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the, on the floor, all those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, six one. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be bringing these two documents to the Board of Health meeting next week for their consideration and approval. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We are now down to the prosecuting attorney's office, Darcy, are you speaking to them?
Sure, I can do that. Last week, Joe Hubble was here and requested that the assistant prosecutor salary be set at the current rate that the current assistant prosecutor's at, which is $76,570. He was requesting that as a salary with no steps, and that would be budget neutral, because that's what is already budgeted for in the 24 budget that was proposed.
Questions for Darcy? Comments? Any, any questions?
The one piece of new information that I do have is that, although it's not a committed date yet, I do have a tentative date that will be the chief prosecutor's last working day. So this promotion to the new chief would happen the following workday, and we would post the assistant position that would be hired after that date also.
Do you care to share that date?
It's tentatively around October 13th.
Mr. Donaldson, you did a very good job of this. Any questions? Looking for a motion there.
Is there a motion?
It's right here.
Actually, I think it is so, I'll make a stab at it, but I'm not sure it'll be complete, so help me. I will make a motion.
Let's take, let's take a pause and let's write the motion down.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So we'll stay at the table, but let's take the motion down.
And write more. I was going to do a decent stab, but that's a good idea. You have a lot of moves, please.
There is.
So there is the salary portion, but he also, is there timing, is there timing part of this?
And no steps. There's a no steps.
Yes.
Well, I move that the prosecutor position be locked in at a rate of $76,570.20 and assistant prosecutor position on a non-union wage schedule range of $60,599.76 to $67,341 files to be eliminated.
With no steps.
With no steps.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion?
It was figured later. Did you? Oh, I did, sorry, over here. Well, I did that, I'll take it.
Any, any discussion?
The date doesn't matter? I mean, you said maybe.
It's, it really doesn't affect the transition, it's budget neutral. The only thing is that he can't hire an assistant prosecutor at this rate unless you.
So that motion gives you everything you need?
I believe so, yeah. If I could hear it again.
Could you read it?
I don't think so, but. Motion by O'Rourke, that the prosecutor position be locked in at a rate of $76,500. This, do you mean the assistant?
Yeah, could you add assistant? Yes.
Oh, I like the first time. You would. Okay, let's try this again. I think what O'Rourke said was, a motion by O'Rourke of the Leland County Board of Commissioners, approve that the assistant prosecutor position be locked in at a rate of $76,570.20, and that the assistant prosecutor, prosecutor position on a non-union wage scale, wage schedule range of $60,599.76 to $67,341.12 be eliminated.
I think that was, the only that changes right after, before, and the assistant prosecutor after the amount of the 76 by 70, for a term of, how long is that with no steps?
There, there would be no steps, just the normal cost of.
Yeah, with no steps should come right after that amount, I think is the appropriate place for that.
With no steps. Is that correct, Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes, I would edit it to my motion.
And that's agreeable with the, yeah, good.
So any further discussion on that? Okay, all those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, six one.
Thank you.
We now are down to equalization, and the 2023 L4029, and Andrew Sager and Sean's here.
So last week, Equalization presented the L4029, which indicated the maximum allowable millage levies for roads, seniors, and the early childhood program, and so returning this week to get confirmation of millages to be levied for those, for those services. And I understand that there was some discussion about what millages we are gonna, what's going to be set below the maximum.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all of the information you've given us, I really appreciate it, Sean. The one thing missing that I think we might have asked for is like, if we, I'm looking at, I'm looking at some projections that leave a really healthy fund balance, like out of 700 and some thousand operational funds, of 66% roughly to 100% fund balances of the projections. So it looks to me like there might be some room in my mind. might be some room in my mind to adjust that down slightly. And I guess the scenarios, one, two, three, can you explain those to me, I guess, first? Thank you.
Yes. So the, I, this is my attempt from our discussion last week in the executive board to take a look at where we, where we stand currently. So to your point, Commissioner Rex wrote, the current fund balance as of last week, call it seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. What I, what I did with that was, step one was to try to take a walk from where we are in September to the end of the year. So that first step, there are uncollected revenues that exist as well as unrecognized expenditures at September twelfth. When you, when you take into consideration those two items, what I'm trying to do is roll forward and affect the budget. The new piece of information with that is under the twenty three remaining unrecognized expenditures, you see a negative, the budget is seven hundred and twenty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty eight dollars. Hopefully that one looks familiar for twenty twenty three. There is a projected cost underspend of a hundred and two thousand dollars. And so when you take that into consideration, what I'm in effect doing is taking the revenues to budget that have not been recognized and the expenses to budget, that would land you in the neighborhood of five hundred and five thousand dollars-ish is in terms of a year-end budget. I'm sorry, a year-end fund balance. What I did then was, was modeled the numbers off of the forty twenty nine that Andrew's been speaking of. And so our taxable value of three point six million dollars across, I'm sorry, billion dollars across the county, the, the scenarios that I picked, and, and please, these are just because the scenarios are infinite. I picked a couple that, that I thought tied into numbers that hopefully are recognizable. The first one is that full millage rate that is on the forty twenty nine is point two four five eight. So I bound it at one end at the, in effect, the, the cap that's out there. My logic was simply, beyond that was, the second scenario is at the same millage rate as levied in twenty twenty two. The reason the dollars are different is because that millage is now on a twenty twenty four or twenty twenty three taxable value that's more than it was. So the result of that is, if you start to do the math across those scenarios, all I'm showing is at the maximum millage, that was eight hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in effect of a, of a budget, if you would. At point two one one, the current millage rate, seven hundred and sixty one thousand, nine hundred and three. The third one I went to, just as a point of interest, if you wanted to hit roughly the same as the current budget of seven hundred and twenty two thousand, that's a millage rate of point two zero zero three. Does that one make sense? So it, it's just in effect a flat revenue scenario. And then the fourth item is, what would it take at the current estimated budget that has, had been, has been presented? And so just by way of that, when we went out in June to ask for budgets, what was, what was submitted was keep it flat to twenty twenty three, which is the seven hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. After the presentation last week, we followed up with, with Doty and the, the team, and I think their, their best estimate next year is a little bit lower than that, which is the six hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars. And so based on that, that, that budget, that would be the bottom end of the range in effect to, to fund them fully on what their ask has been.
So if I boil this down, and I look at option number four at point one eight six one, that still leaves them with a seventy percent fund balance. Five hundred and five thousand fund balance divided by seven hundred and twenty two thousand is seventy percent of operational costs in a fund balance.
I trust your math, but yes, in effect, it keeps the fund balance at what we're estimating the twenty twenty three finished position.
I mean, a lot of places would love to have thirty percent. I, I guess, just from my point, looking at that, I would be for option four, which leaves it a fund balance of seventy percent for early childhoods.
I'm just wondering if Mr. Thoreau has any comment on this?
I think having a, you know, obviously having a healthy fund balance is good in this case. I, I trust that the millage rate would be set, that that would be taken care of and not. I guess I'm open to what, what they believe will be a good balance as far as that goes.
I have a question for, for Sean. You talked to Doty and you talked to Michelle, or Michelle talked to Doty.
Yeah.
Is the six seventy one what they said they needed?
Yes. Yeah.
So they weren't asking for more than that. They were asking for six seventy one.
To, to be, so the scenario was in June, when we went out with the books, the ask was seven twenty two, eight twenty eight, consistent, flat to this year. What we were, what we received back last week was six seventy one, six seventy three, which was actually in the materials that were distributed at the executive board meeting.
So that's what they asked for?
That's their estimated expenditures.
And I also think it's important to note that early childhood's fiscal year is October first to September thirtieth. So the fourth, our fourth quarter next year is not in the six seventy one. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, so.
I know it's.
I may simplify things for presentation purposes. My, my assumption always, when, when I'm rolling those things forward in, to get to a year-end number, I'm not trying to be so fine with the taxation to assume what part of the December tax bill is collected in December versus January. To me, it's, you're, you're just trying to get an estimate at a point in time that's arbitrary. And so that's what it represents.
When we approved this initially, there was some front loaded because of the way we did tax collection. Is, is that no longer an issue? Does this, does this cover the first quarter in twenty twenty five?
Maybe Kathy, can you talk to the way we quarterly pay?
And I, I know what you're talking about, and I think this fund balance helps with that. So, because we do have the obligation of the twenty twenty four budget, but we also have the obligation of the first quarter of twenty five that we should have the funds because we haven't, we haven't realized the collection in twenty four, four twenty five yet. It, it doesn't roll in those first three months. It's, it dwindles in and then it settles. So you always want to have some money in your reserves to, to take care of the first quarter in the next, in the next calendar year.
So will they have enough? Because the first year, they, we had to bring the money out of the county funds, and we don't want to have to do that yet. So will they have enough?
For twenty twenty four?
For that, for that last, or their first quarter, our last, from our last, oh, Dan's got his hand up.
Oh, excuse me. I was just gonna say, so that the six seventy one, that's what Doty indicated for the one-year operating cost, so divided by four, roughly a hundred and sixty seven thousand, and we have, what was the number in the fund balance?
Currently, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand at year end. I was estimating five hundred and five.
Okay. So taking that out of there, I guess the question is, is that gonna be enough to have fund balance, depending on what the percentage of the operating cost per year? You know, is that a comfortable number?
Taking the five oh five down by a hundred and seventy five.
Except it would go back.
And then it would go back up. Yeah, then it would go back.
Six months of the year of expenses, assuming, because I believe these expenses kind of are more linear than some of our expenses. They're stacked, and our expenses are not really heavily, the expense side is unthrombated.
And it's contract, it's contractual, so we get a quarterly billing.
Tip for billing. So you would go down, you'd still actually still have your five hundred and five fund balance, but at the end of that first quarter, you would still have funding to run a half a year at five hundred and five, roughly. That's, I mean, I.
There's a timing with the collection of taxes with all that is the consideration.
Question for Andrew. You agree with the math on what that release rate would bring in?
Correct. Yep, I've checked.
We can motion. I would move that we set the early childhood millage at point one eight six one.
Second.
One eight six zero.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Loder.
Should we amend the motion to also approve the L forty four?
At the same time.
Twenty nine, as otherwise presented?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that modification in my motion. I think that's what I meant to say. I forgot the rest of it. So thank you, Commissioner O'Rourke.
Correct.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, in your services or is that something? I just.
So that's what you're doing right now?
We left that one as presented. So I think, was it, was, do you want that motion to be for my amendment or for the generally?
I thought we had, I thought.
I reworded my motion.
Okay, reworded the motion.
My motion would be to, to change the early childhood millage to point one eight six one and leave the rest of the millages as stated.
All set now? All those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, Dan. Thank you.
I'd like to just say that my only regret is that we're not alone in the world. And those guys are good. They keep developing wonderful programs for kids. So I hope we're good. I hope we're okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Plan the budgets. But hopeful that you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we, we now are down to the creation of an ad hoc committee review, the HVAC system. I see this is a very short term, no, no per diem. I reached out to three commissioners, since the Rex wrote, Commissioner Lotner and Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Ross was had a bunch of stuff on her plate, and I would like to suggest that we approve an ad hoc committee to review and bring back to the full commission some ideas about HVAC that might reduce some of the expenditures and the composition of the ad hoc review. The, Michelle, W A. So that would be my suggestion, but I can't make the motion.
I would make that motion.
You got that? Yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
So it's Lotner, Rexro.
Yes.
Oh, you didn't want to be on that?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? We will try to come back while we're still in the budget process before October eighth. That may be ambitious, but we will try to do that.
And we'd be free to bring in some expertise outside of our thing, because I have a few names in mind that would probably help us with that school office.
So October second is the bid for the HVAC system. So we need to do that. Know that that's when we would actually add the.
Have that information, correct. We'll figure out what we're doing outside of this.
For Sean and you have to be a part of that as well. Okay, we have a motion. All those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. We now have late addition to replace the heat pump for the circuit. Commissioner Oger?
I would move that we replace heat pump number two thirty three in the circuit for judges' chambers. Support. I did. And yes, I'm gonna say that. Who's talking to that?
Doesn't need to involve with it. Process for that, that doesn't need to be part of that motion that we made. Move that we waive the business.
I don't have the process.
We have a number already to do that?
Yeah.
We didn't go all for bids, right?
No, it's all part of the same systems that we've been utilizing.
Which is fine, but I think you still need to say that we waived the bid process, right? It's the same function. So, sir, would you amend your motion to say we waive our bidding process?
I would do that.
All those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. We're now down to late edition four, which is Michelle Crocker's late edition request. And do you want to speak to that?
I can, sure. Cam, if you want me to, but you don't have any questions. I explained it last week.
I just have one quick question. This, this is just really to allow you to go for the grant, right? That's all.
I, yeah. The only way we can get money is for county clerks to do it. And I did add one sentence in there at the end that I normally wouldn't want to do, and it's to further approve any amendments that are submitted because I plan to amend it tomorrow.
Okay.
To improve that position. I asked, because it's possible to get it reimbursed. I just found out today.
I move to recommend the county board of commissioners approve the early voting grant application. The state of Michigan has prepared, signed, and submitted in the amount of eighty seven thousand, three hundred and ninety six, and further approve any amendments that are submitted under the grant for reimbursement.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who support the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you, Michelle. We are now down to review of financials.
I, I think it's a lot of bills from Standard Electric. I expect those are all like work is.
For the Atlanta Bowl.
It's not related to any project. I, in talking with the maintenance group, they do have things downstairs to use as needed. So it's like an, an in-house inventory of repair parts.
So that's what Jerry's purchasing then?
Yes, they're charged to Jerry's six, three, one fund, which is maintenance. But not related to a project.
Any?
I did see the light and stroke.
Yes.
I think that's like the second time we've been head over, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, we've had some excitement. And just full disclosure, in lately, you have white broadband for the two cabinets that they discussed in your tele visit there, and also Midway Electronic, which we are contractually required to pay. However, it is up to you. You can decide.
I said that's the tower for Northport, correct?
Lila Tower, Lila Tower.
It's, yeah, it's also in our, we have funds under, under amendment here for that tower. So that, is that?
The proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the proposed budget amendment is to establish a project for the top, well, it won't do it, but it'll allow us to pay the bill.
Okay.
Because we have no money in Fund four, six, eight to pay that.
So that's why this is what we're going through the amendment and then we'll be approved. Yeah, okay, that's how fast we're doing.
Totally up to you. We can pull it too.
We're behind a bar on that tower, so are we? Once we do this and I think we're receiving some money from Cherryland Electric and Lillona Township. Is everything signed, ready to go?
Mike, Mike, and are you okay if I take the lead on this, Sean? My understanding is that we do have a signed agreement with Cherryland Electric. I I do need to see that contract so I can understand how we're going to build them, the hundred and sixty two. Lillona Township is not executed, or I don't know if it's in draft. I I don't have any details on that. We are in contract with Midway Electronics. That agreement was signed in August and it had payment terms in it.
Oh, fifty percent John.
Upon execution.
Lillona Township did approve, but they have not signed an agreement with Matt, I understand. But they did approve a hundred thousand dollar expenditure. And we need to have a special.
Subrecipient agreement would be in order if they are using ARPA funds for this project. And I would suggest at your next meeting that you have a motion to establish this as a project. Because we don't have a budget for it, so this is basically we're putting this down in front of you so we can pay the Midway bill.
Okay, if we pay this Midway bill or maybe perhaps put in the cart for the course, but this one with the project forward next month, we could do retro. Basically, so, okay, we need to have that on agenda for next month and moving.
That would help.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Now, we're at committee reports, recommendations, resolutions.
The Northern Michigan Counties Association went to Emmett County Recycling to work on that. And it was incredibly impressive. They, there are no costs to the citizens of Emmett County that are recycling. You can recycle just about anything. They sell everything they recycle and it is remade into products. Nothing is wasted. They started with a village in nineteen ninety for two years. After that, they've done grants. They are self-sustaining. They have twenty nine county employees with full benefits. And it's incredibly impressive. We should put it in our ten year plan. Because it's also an incredible. It's an incredible operation and anyone who could get a chance to go out and see that is is very impressive.
Anybody else? Any any special report by anybody? We are now down to our our second public comment opportunity. This is a five minute limit on this, and you may speak to us about anything that's on your mind, and we will listen. Yes, sir.
Don Spinnick in Leland Township. I just heard that Emmett County has a recycling center at no cost to the citizens. But then a few seconds later, I heard that it was funded with grant funds. So does that mean it was funded from the citizen's other pocket by way of some other government entity? That's that's my question.
Thank you. Other public tenants? Just Phil.
Bill Weisner, Helmut Township. So I just want to go over this handout a little bit, right from the first page, talking about the USB ports. And Mark Cook says USB drives can also, they can actually, let's see. Hold on, come into the second. Second page here. Okay, I know I'll go back to first page. Mark Cook says at eight twenty eight, they're used, they're used in a lot of voting systems, okay? And the election officials think it's perfectly okay to use them because they don't realize that USB drives can also, what else they can do? So he's actually going to, he's going to hand one and they're going to test it on this machine. And the machine also has Microsoft SQL Server on it, or Microsoft SQL. It's a spreadsheet and it's not supposed to be on it. It's not an authorized software for these machines. But that's what you can plug it into and make everything flip on the votes. So on the second page, so this is running another backdoor utility, a second one in the installed voting system. It would never, by the way, it would never show up on the screen because the computers think so fast. When that little script goes through, you don't see it. The clerks won't see it. The people watching for fraud don't see it. And down below says a USB drive. It can make the machine think that it's a keyboard, a mouse, a CAC reader, not sure what that is, but it doesn't have to be identified as a USB and think, oh, somebody just plugged in the keyboard. No, no concern for fraud there. And on page three, their own software installer actually actually opens up a hole in the firewall to allow these systems to be connected to, and it's easy to prove too, if you could look in the to the machine. And Clay, when you were testing, Clay Parek, he tested these machines for ten years. He was one of the only ones that tested them. When you were testing these, did they keep you away from the source code? Absolutely. They'd never let you look at the source code. In fact, back in twenty eighteen or so, it was one of the Democrats, one of the films out there. He was complaining of the arrogance of the machine people because it's like, oh, you can't look at that. You're just a peon citizen, you know? That's ours. That's proprietary. Well, the election needs to be transparent. So you can program to do just about anything. So I'm going to go on to Patrick Kolbeck now. He spent eight hours in the twenty twenty two election straight at the county building, not at the townships where you can watch people vote, but where they bring all the USB drives back in. Five policemen were there watching him, looking for any excuse to get him out of there. The bathrooms were locked down, so I'm glad he could hold it for eight hours. And he heard workers saying inside, oh, they've just uploaded the votes from the city of Plymouth. On page five, it shows the hallway there where he was. It was a primary election, August second, twenty twenty two. And you can watch this video. It's on FrankSpeech.com and it's about November or September fifteenth. You'll see a picture of Patrick Kolbeck. That's the one. And on the bottom picture on that page, you can see all of the the votes that have been uploaded, but down at the bottom in the back there, he's got a square around it. That's where he watched the couriers come in, like someone will bring the the USB drives to the county during the next election. Watch them bring them in and put them in a box. Now here, I assume they're going to use them. But there, they didn't use the USB drives. They stayed in the box, yet everything was uploaded. So machines still online there. The last one. You know, I'm going to finish, I'm going to skip that and just look at this again. These are cast vote records. Everything should be in that red circle. It's like tossing a coin a thousand times. Everything should be a straight line, but it's way down there. And this is how many votes are flipped, up to a ten percent swing for the early voting.
Thank you.
Consideration.
Anybody else? Thank you for your comments and thanks for coming tonight. Any commissioner comments?
Just a point of information. They receive bought big equipment. It wasn't a yearly thing that they get grants every year. They sell, but they've gotten some grants for big equipment.
Any other commissioner comments? We are now down to approval of financials.
Recommend to approve. I've moved to approve amendment number twenty three dash zero one three.
Support. All those who squares in motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
I would move to approve budget transfer number twenty three dash zero zero six.
Support. All those who support the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
The two proven accounts, seven hundred and eighty two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents.
Support. All those who support the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
I would move to approve post that six million seven hundred and thirty seven thousand two hundred and eighty one dollars and eighty three cents.
All those who support the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
I want to thank Sean Kathy for the tower information and get us geared up on that so we can move forward with that project.
That's been our agenda. It is the periodic personnel evaluation of our administrator. I move within to close session to consider periodic personnel evaluation of county administrator at her request, as permitted by a, you can file the laws fifteen point two six eight, practice one, bracket eight. Support. Your roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch up.
Use the numbers against.
I know, I just had the conversation louder. That's a counter. Commissioner Aurora?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call vote, yes or no?
When did I lose control? Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Algar?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Seven zero.
I would suggest we take a five minute break and meet in the conference room here. We will, we will return after a closed session, but hopefully it will be about an hour.
Please, ma'am.
Please may I?
Motion to go out of closed session and we vote in six zero before that.
Do you want to re-.
Yeah, let's can I do a motion adjourned?
Can I do the do the vote again?
Yeah, back there on the hall.
I think Joe should be recognized he's still here so it's that test roll again.
I wanted to convention. Let's re-vote on the motion. All those who support the motion of going out of closed session say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved seven zero. I did check with our expert clerk and we may take out of the closed session what Deb gave us. And any notes that we took in but we should not talk about what we talked about in the closed session. Looking for a motion to adjourn? All those who support the motion adjourned?